As we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office. That is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, and that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thides. Amen.
Amen. All right. Next is a citizen's participation. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the board? Seeing none. Our next item on the agenda is a commercial garage public hearing for Rosenti Trucking Incorporated located at 107 North Main Street. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll make a motion. Will you open the public hearing?
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second. The public hearing is open. Ms. Weston, do I understand that there was a problem with the applicant?
Yes, he had a family emergency and is unable to make it tonight.
Okay. Are there any members of the public here that would like to speak to this public hearing?
I'm just wondering what kind of license, what kind of business is he going to be running?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Because he just didn't come. The question was what type of business that is going to be running here? That was from the public. I just want to make sure the Cable Access Channel picked that up.
Yeah. And I have no more information that's on the application. What I would suggest is since the applicant is unable to attend, that we have a motion to continue this to our next meeting. At that time, the applicant can explain. Yes?
All it says here under his application is other trucking. So it appears to be a trucking.
Yeah, that's right. That's why.
Is it running if a trucking business has a commercial garage license? A trucking company for itself to repair its own trucks or to repair commercial trucks?
We don't know.
Yeah.
It doesn't say on the application, so.
That's the purpose of the hearing.
I'll make a motion that we continue this until the next meeting.
Well, we have to have a date and time certain.
Yeah, it would be 7:20. Shall we say 6:15?
So that's July 20th.
July 20th at 6:15.
6:15.
I'll second that. I'll make that motion.
Okay. You have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I just want to make sure the public knows that this is just a point of information. If there's anyone wanting to appeal a hearing, you have to be at all the meetings. So that's why we're telling you, that's one reason we're telling you when this is continued to. So it's July 20th at 6:15.
He's just running a trucking company. He's going to be working on his own trucks. That's fine. Is he going to be running a legit business, like working on automobiles and trucks and everything?
We'll find out, I guess, on July 20th.
All right. All right. Next is, it's 6:10, so it's too early for our N-Star, next our next public hearing. So why don't we take the 6:20 item, the vote to approve the Lakeview Street/Indian Street Community Preservation Grant Agreement. Mr. LaVon, do you have information on this?
I would defer to Sarah on this.
I think that, I believe Alan Decker is here from the Buzzards Bay Coalition.
All right.
And.
I know he looks familiar.
Yeah.
Mr. Decker?
If you'd like to come up.
Mr. Decker can explain this probably better than I can. Have a seat. Yep. Use the mic.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. My name is Alan Decker. I'm with the Buzzards Bay Coalition. And the purpose of the appointment this evening is I'm seeking your endorsement of the grant agreement that has been reached between the Carver Community Preservation Committee and Buzzards Bay Coalition as to the use of CPA funds which were approved at the recent town meeting for our purchase of property that is on Lakeview Street, spans down to Main Street, and then a separate parcel on Indian Street. I believe in your briefing packs, you have a copy of the town flyer, or the flyer that we created that was distributed or able to be picked up by town meeting members describing this project with a map on the backside to give you the orientation. And I have paper copies. Looks like everybody has one. So, let's see. Mr. Bentley, Chair of the CPC, asked me to put together a grant agreement, which I did. He has taken it up in his committee and approved it, forwarded it here into Town Hall. We have signed it. The copy that was provided hasn't, hadn't yet been signed by the Coalition, but I do have a copy should any members of the board want to make sure that the Coalition has signed the agreement as well. And as I said, I'm simply seeking your endorsement. We plan to use the funds to acquire the property, make it publicly accessible, and add it actually to our reserve system of properties that we have throughout the Buzzards Bay watershed for public passive recreational purposes.
All right.
I'm happy to answer any questions members of the select board have or members of the public.
Mr. Belvin?
Actually, it's a point of order. Sir, before you, when you videotape a public meeting here, you're supposed to ask the chairman just to make sure that it's being done per the open meeting law. We did at the beginning of our meeting saying that it was going to be videotaped by our Cable Access Channel. But just in the future, when you come in, if you could just let the chairman know that you're going to be videotaping?
Absolutely. And I apologize.
No problem.
I am John Gonzalez and with the Stanley Gray Network, a regionist leader, elevating indigenous voices.
No, 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 that's fine. I just, like you say, don't have a problem videotaping. And like I said, it's just a courtesy that you would go ahead and ask for videotaping. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
My question, so by passive recreation, okay, is that including hunting within that, also within that? Because a lot of our other properties that we've taken allowed hunting as a passive or?
Certainly, we wouldn't be opposed to having hunting. I'm not sure the parcel that is located between Lakeview Street and Main Street is sufficiently distant from other development.
It is not.
But the Indian Street parcel, as you know, butts existing Concom Land.
Right.
And we're not, we're not opposed to having hunters on the property. And we will be allowing that into the future.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
So, Mr. Decker, I'm personally really thrilled that you guys are doing this because, as you know, we, the town owns 29 plus or minus acres on Indian Street. How many acres are you guys, have you guys purchased?
So, has not happened as of yet, but it will be happening shortly thereafter. And this property is 32 acres in sum, in total.
That's great, yeah. And so, that, that probably, to Mr. Belvin's point, is adequate for some sort of hunting down there. You just have to be careful, but.
That, that is split between the two, the two properties.
Right, if you add them together, yeah.
Yeah.
And just a point of information for you, our Carver Trail and Conservation Stewards Committee is actively working on trying to clear the trails on our current conservation land.
Great.
And we're hoping at some point we can maybe work with you guys to connect the two.
Absolutely. That is definitely something we want to look into. And we're certainly aware of the Trails Group. One of the members is on the CPC and we've had good communication with him so far. So we are certainly aware of that effort and look forward to tapping into that person power.
Yeah, yeah, because that'll be about 50 acres right there.
Yes, ma'am.
Only one minor point on page one of the agreement, and I don't know that it matters legally, but it refers to Indian Street as Indian Road in paragraph one.
Okay. I do see that. I'm happy to change that to street. I'm not aware of any comments that Town Council had back from a review of this, but I'm happy to make that correction.
Well, if Council's okay with it, then it's probably.
Because I do want it properly noted, and I know it's street, and that evaded me. So I appreciate the extra attention to it.
Sure thing. Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we support this.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Just out of curiosity, document signatures happen later, after the meeting or at the end of the meeting?
After the meeting.
Okay, very good. Can I coordinate with you on the original document?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Do we have to have a separate vote for you to sign this?
I don't think so.
No, because there's only one spot.
Right.
Right.
It's okay.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
All right, well, my phone says it's 6:15 now, so we can have a motion to open the poll hearing that was continued from 6:121, the N-Star EverSource Poll Hearing on Indian Street. Is there a motion?
A motion that we open, we continue to open the.
Reopen.
Reopen.
There we go, reopen.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak to this? Seeing none.
We have to vote on it.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello again.
How are you?
Didn't vote?
I'm good, thank you.
All in favor?
Hmm?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
Sorry, I thought we voted.
Oh, God, I can leave.
Not so quick.
Want to do it right. Yeah, absolutely.
Ms. Bogart, I think you had some questions from the, from the last hearing.
Yeah, I had emailed Rick. I thought they were pretty basic question. One was, can you continue the underground power from the east that's coming down Indian Road? And if not, why? And then my other part was, can you bring it underground from the west part where the poles would start instead of putting poles in? And if not, why?
So from the, Karen Johnson on behalf of EverSource, and from the east, the answer was that is a private, privately owned underground service. EverSource does not own, maintain, or have the right to extend from that service.
Okay.
And that's from the east. From the west, said that it was, the cost was significant, approximately $108,000.
Okay. I don't know those figures, but it can be done?
It can be done, but the cost for overhead is approximately $12,000. If they were to bring it from the underground, it goes up to approximately $108,000.
Okay. In my opinion, if it can be done, and it saves on the tree trimming, I think that's great. I know we, as a town, have a lot of power issues. We know that. People complain. So to have it underground when it can be done, I think is in the best interest of the town and the project. And question, these six poles were for two houses being built.
Two houses, right.
But I believe the plan, you may not know, is for more houses to be built down there? And if yes, would they continue with more poles?
Well, I don't have any information on any additional homes being built, so I'm here just for these two today. But, you know, once the poles are in, and they're in the right of way, you know, if they need to service other houses, then they would.
Right. I believe that the intent of the project was to have up to eight houses, I think it was said in the past. So this would be just six poles for two. So I would recommend that we have the power go underground. I don't see a necessity for it to be above ground.
Anyone else? Ms. Ewans?
I have a question. If, if we were to ask EverSource to put the poles, run them underground, does that cost go, does EverSource soak up that cost or does that go to the homeowners?
To have this service done, that would be, you mean, in general, not for this particular job?
General, yeah.
Yeah. No, the, EverSource does not take on the cost to put the services underground. That would be on the town.
So, so that falls on the town or the homeowners?
Right. If you wanted to take your, put your town service underground, yes, that would be a town project.
Okay. So for this particular project, that falls on the owners of the homes or?
Correct. On the builder.
On the, on the builders.
Right.
Right? Not the people, the homes are under construction, so whoever.
Under construction, right. So the builder contract.
Right. Whoever buys the house isn't responsible. It's for the people building the homes. And then, would it be possible to mark the trees that would be cut down or trimmed if the poles were to be put in?
Mark them? I'm not following what you mean.
To, to somehow mark the trees that are going to be affected by any potential poles? Spray paint them, put a tie around them? I know it's been done with kind of other things.
Well, he said, the, looking at it, I'm sure that, you know, because a lot of, they kind of ride out to the road. So he said approximately 10 feet back would be, need to be tree trimmed to keep it off of the lines.
I would just say to you guys, since it can be done underground, and I believe this is just the beginning of a larger project, now would be the time to have it go underground from the beginning. So I would recommend that we do not approve the poles because there is another way.
Anyone else? So just so I'm clear, if we were to turn this down, so the additional $96,000, that cost would be passed along to the builder?
That's correct.
Correct? Okay. Okay. Well, Ms. Bogart, is that a motion?
No.
Are you making a motion to deny?
Sure, yes. I will make a, I've never turned, I will make a motion to deny the construction and installation of the six poles on Indian Street as proposed.
Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
We have a motion and a second.
So, Mr. Chair, so I guess my question is, can this be modified?
Well, the initial plan was to go overhead, basically, you know, it's a big jump in cost. But, and so they went through the scenario for me, you know, what the underground would be, what, so it's, they'd have to install five manholes, 1,500 feet of conduit, 1,600 feet of cable, and the total labor and cost in labor material, $108,663.
Right.
So that's, to my knowledge, the modification. If it needs to, if they need to look at it again, you know, I'm sure that they could, but what, you know, I don't design these, so.
No, no, I know it's not, it's not up to you. I totally, you're, you're just the messenger. I get that. No, I guess my question is, short of turning this down, is there any way that you think Makepeace could mo, Makepeace, here we go. EverSource could modify this so that, and come back at a continued hearing, so that all the members would feel comfortable with this?
They would have to, EverSource, I'm sure, would have to come back. And they, you know, it's been done before, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hoffman?
I just had a question. You had mentioned a $96,000. Where'd you get that number from?
Well, I think, forgive me. I think the original estimate for the poles was $12,000.
Okay.
And I think you mentioned that the cost to put it underground would be $108,000.
$108,000, correct.
Right. So that's, the difference is $96,000.
Okay. That's what I thought. I just wanted to confirm that's what you.
And I guess my concern here is that, obviously, if we pass the $96,000 on to the builder, the builder is probably going to pass the $96,000 on to the home buyers. So that's a, that's a substantial amount of money. Are there any other comments?
Yeah.
Mr. Belvin?
So, I have going from the road to my house and underground. I love it because I don't have a telephone pole. If I did, I'd have it in the middle of my driveway going up. I like the idea of everything being underground because we're a rural town and we do have a problem with our power outages in our town. EverSource has been coming around, cutting trees down and stripping around all the power lines, but I think we still have an issue with that. I think if it was underground, I think that we'd have less of a problem. And if it is a long-term, possible long-term project to go down, maybe it's something that the company should look at and say, well, maybe we should do things underground. So I'm kind of in favor of this right now, to deny it.
Mr. Hoffman?
I have a question. So the $108,000, that was for just underground for the two homes?
Well, they, right.
So if there were more, if there were going to be more homes in the future, obviously that would be more of a cost.
Well, if the poles are there already, then, you know, we could connect to the underground service from that pole. We don't have to install it again.
Okay. So the $108,000 was for underground, to not do the poles, that would be for underground service, correct?
$108,000 would be, they're basing it on these two lots.
Right.
So.
Okay.
I, you know, I don't know about anything else tonight, so.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, could I ask Mrs. Bogart if you would amend your motion to continue this hearing and ask EverSource to redesign something that we feel comfortable with?
Um.
Instead of denying the project outright?
Sure. I, I guess I would be a little unclear as, as the direction. I don't know if it's in our jurisdiction to tell them, go back and do it underground because it, it is coming from the project owner, correct? They're driving it?
They requested.
It's our poll.
Yeah. Okay. So then, so yes, I would rescind my prior motion and make a new motion that the hearing be continued under, with the request that EverSource come back with a different design that's underground? Is that what you think, Sarah, or that?
If that's what you're asking for, yeah.
So continue to July 20th at 6:30?
Sure.
Okay.
That's, um, we have a motion and a second to continue this hearing until July 20th at 6:30.
I have a question.
Yes.
So if, if they come back and agree to go underground, this is for a poll hearing? If it's underground and there are no poles involved, is that still, is that a poll hearing?
Mr. LaVon?
That's a good question. I don't know.
I'm just saying if Dan's going to.
Right. I've never heard that one before.
Yeah, it's a good question.
We have to look into that, yes.
Okay.
I just don't want to, you know, extend, you know.
Well, it's a continued public hearing.
Right.
And it's the same issue, but you're right. It's, is it a different title? I, I don't know.
I will look into that.
Okay.
Okay, well.
Just asking.
On-poll hearing.
Correct.
Can I, the builder, he is here.
Can I just make a comment?
Absolutely.
Demetrius Asiotes, I'm the builder for 30 Indian Street and Lot 8 Indian Street. The only thing I would ask the board to consider is, I have one, that first house that's being built under construction, and I have one lot to the left of that. I don't own any of the other land down the street, so I understand wanting to bring the power down the street underground, but to, for an additional $96,000 for two houses is a large cost to absorb for, for two homes. The, the only other, I guess the only other thing I would say is, if there were more houses eventually to go down the road, if we could, or if you would consider approving the poles to get to those, at least that first lot, and then possibly going underground if there are homes additionally down the road. And I don't know if that's something that you can approve, I don't know technically if you can approve it and say if there's additional houses down the road that they would have to be underground. Obviously, I'm concerned with the house that's under construction that's, you know, I'm waiting for power to finish and close and whatnot. So that, that is my, where I'm coming from, and my interest is to get that house finished, powered, and sold. So that, that's where I'm coming from. I just ask if the board would consider maybe the poles, and then if there were more houses down the road, maybe taking the power underground from those poles? To try, to try to meet in the middle, if, if at all possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got a quick question.
Mr. Hoffman?
So the two, so there's a house under construction, and then there's another lot that you own, correct?
Correct.
So right now, you're looking for six poles for those two lots?
Correct. So it would be, and I don't know if it's east or west, I think going towards 58 is east.
Yes.
So if we came from the west and put those six poles in, that sixth pole would take care of Lot 9 and Lot 8. And like I said, if you want to put it in the motion or the agreement to, if there are future houses down the road, that they would be underground, I, again, I don't know if that's possible, but that's, so yeah, so those six poles would get me power for the two lots that I own.
I have another question, Mr. Ewans. I, I don't know why I didn't think of this sooner. Why do you need six poles for two houses?
So, I don't know. I believe the, if, yeah, the closest pole to my west, west, stops approximately 450 feet, 500 feet from Lot 9. So.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. So the, and then the other end of the street where the private underground pole is, I believe is 1,800 feet roughly. So that, so that's, obviously, the underground is a significant cost increase because of the distance, and you need handholds and whatnot. So, yeah, that's, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, I mean, guess, short of having an answer to Jim's question, my, my thoughts still remain.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to continue this public hearing to July 20th at 6:30. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The meeting is continued. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is an exit conference from our Town Auditors Powers and Sullivan.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you hear me okay?
Fine, thank you.
I'm Renee Davis. I was the Audit Engagement Partner.
Please speak into the microphone.
Sure.
That's for people at home.
Better? I'm here to go over the results of the fiscal year 2020 audit. So that would be the audit for the year ending June 30th, 2020, almost a year ago at this point. And it's, a whole lot's gone on this year. So I did prepare a PowerPoint just to sort of keep us on topic. You do have copies of the three reports that were issued as a result of the audit, the financial statements for the town, the management letter, and the single audit report. And the PowerPoint really is just to, again, keep us on topic and to go over the results, not only the results, but what happened this year. COVID hitting and conducting an audit during that, during a pandemic was certainly different for us. And the PowerPoint really is just to, again, keep us on topic, um, and to go over the results, not only the results, but what happened this year. Covid hitting and conducting an audit, um, during that, during a pandemic was certainly different for us. There were a lot of issues that we had to consider, and I just want to talk to you, make sure you're aware of how that process all took place. We'll go over the audit process, the results of the audit, a small analysis of the financial position and the history of the town's financial position? As well as the results of the single audit or the audit of federal awards and the management letter. And the objective of our audit, um, for those of you who are, are not familiar or get confused about that, is to give an opinion on your financial statements. So, we come in and do a whole lot of testing of your accounts and your balances. We confirm some of your balances with outside parties. We interrupt the day-to-day operations of the town, and all of that is just so that we can sign our opinion and opine on your financial statements? And that they're presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We, um, because you're a governmental entity, we also follow generally accepted governmental auditing standards? Which require that we consider the town's internal controls over your federal awards as well. Due to Covid nineteen, the audit, the, the typical audit procedures of us coming in and looking at your files in person? And visiting departments in person couldn't happen. So, um, the audit, both the preliminary audit work last May, as well as the year-end audit work, which began in November, everything was done remotely. What that meant for us is that we had to have a way for the town to provide us with all the information and audit support? So that we could do the same work. We weren't allowed to reduce the amount of work that we did. The information was transferred to us through a secure portal, um, required some, some work on the town's end. We do appreciate that. Of course, we all had to sort of adjust to, to the situation in front of us. Again, the, the town was able to do that. We could transfer the files securely through a portal? That we could import your information to help you in preparing the financial statements. We also had to think about what the town was doing differently, right? So, as the year progressed, the laws in Massachusetts changed to adopt to having remote town meetings, um, allowing for some electronic signatures. So, some of your regular internal controls that typically we would take for granted couldn't happen. And we had to follow along to see what the town may be doing different as far as your regular internal control processes. So, it was certainly a focus of the audit this year. Along with that, throughout the year came, and I'm actually on slide five, a lot of different federal and state funding? To help to offset the costs related to Covid nineteen. And if we can, if we can remember back, not only did the funding come out in different stages throughout the year? Some of the rules and regulations related to how that money could be spent has changed throughout the year. Um, I, just thinking about, it was sometime in the fall that FEMA said you could use, they would pay a hundred percent instead of seventy-five percent of their costs. All of that, from an accounting and auditing standpoint, means journal entries and changing money, reclassing money around in your books. So, following that, keeping the town informed and staying in touch with, um, town management to make sure that you are aware of the changes? And that things were accounted for and reported correctly, again, was a, was a big focus of our audit this year. I did include the ARPA funding on this, although that really wasn't around for fiscal year twenty. Um, as you know, in May, the, the federal government came out with more money. This is looking forward. This is going to be more the twenty-two, um, twenty-two and the next several years of funding. And, you know, we're working with the state now to come out with really some of the regulations related to that. There's four different things that you're going to be able to spend that, and that's another big amount of money that will be available to the town? That will be a big focus of your independent audit. School, there were three different types of school money, money that came out through the state, the CARES Act, what we call ESER one, ESER two, and ESER three. All of them come out, come with different rules and regulations that had to be tested to make sure the town was in compliance. And our responsibility is to plan and perform our audit to get reasonable, but not absolute assurance? That your financial statements are not materially misstated. What that means from a practical standpoint is that we are not in looking at every transaction. We are testing your controls. We're documenting what the town does to make sure your records are accurate? To make sure that you're reconciling your accounts, reconciling your cash, um, that the departmental records are all being recorded in your ledgers properly? And testing on a selective basis, um, for accuracy. Management is responsible for maintaining those records, for adopting internal, internal controls? And for the presentation of the information in your financial statements. We come in and help to put the information together from a practical standpoint? But management reviews it, takes responsibility for it, and actually signs a letter expressing to us that they, um, understand and take full responsibility for that information. So, the, the way the audit works, we start even before year end. It's almost a year-round process. We start before year end. Once town meeting happens, looking at what town meeting voted to make sure you have good internal controls? To make sure that your ledgers are reflecting what town meeting approved for a budget? That any transfers within that are properly approved, that you have controls not to overspend your budget. Certainly, walking into fiscal year twenty with Covid impacting the town, we did not know, right? What we were going to see for revenues coming in, you know, a lot of communities, although your real estate taxes really didn't seem to be hit, certainly not in twenty? Nor your motor vehicle, but some other, you know, because businesses stopped, there were some revenues that just couldn't be collected. So, that was a focus. We look before year end to see what the town's plans are related to, um, testing for information going into some of those long-term assets and liabilities. So, you have a lot of information going into some of the big liabilities on your books like OPEB. We'll talk a little bit about OPEB. We need to make sure that you have the right information that you're sending to your actuary? So that they can come up with your OPEB liability, and it can be properly recorded in your financial statements. We do the testing of your federal grants before year end? Um, and test your, um, your procurement, your, some of your transactions, revenues, expenditures? And we certainly focus on the journal entries that are being recorded in your books to make sure that they are properly authorized and approved. Then, we leave for a little bit, um, let you close the books in June, in June or after June thirtieth? Get the June thirtieth numbers together, and we begin the year-end audit work sometime in November. What that means is that you have, the books closed, cash is all reconciled, the receivables are reconciled? And again, in November of twenty twenty, all of that was done remotely. So, your finance team sent us all of the information that we needed to do the audit. We were able to get, um, confirmations from third parties when we needed to electronically? To be able to help to start putting together the final year-end financial numbers. Now, in November, not all of the information is available. So, some of the information in your financial statements comes from outside parties such as the retirement system? So, we have to wait for those audits to be done, to put everything together, to present the drafts to the town. It does require a lot of coordination. Management, in this case, had to upload that information for us, as well as, um, work with the actuary to get the OPEB numbers? Work with Plymouth County to be able to get the retirement numbers? And I will say, as usual, we got full cooperation from the people in the town, and the town, and the audit went very smoothly. As smoothly as it could go during time of, um, again, little different year for us. So, I have two slides here on the areas of audit emphasis, just to show you sort of our thought process. We really focus on the financial statements themselves. It's a big-picture audit, making sure your financial statements are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We have to go through and understand your internal controls, so the treasurer's office, the finance department? What are the processes that they have to verify that all of the activity of the town, your financial activity, has been properly recorded in your ledgers? That there's not a risk that something could be, um, misstated or materially, um, not recorded either correctly? Or in the right place and the right fund? So, every year, we go through and look at any changes in your key information and your technology systems. Again, this year, did you have any internal control changes because of Covid? We focus a lot on cash and investments, making sure that those accounts are reconciled and recorded properly and in the right funds? And that they are maintained in accordance with your financial policies? We, making sure that your receivables are properly recorded, so the taxpayer receivables for real estate, for motor vehicle, et cetera, are properly recorded? And that there's real support behind those, and that you have a good process to be able to act on those and record those receipt, and collect those balances when you need to. Some of the things that we do, you don't do on a regular basis, but at the end of the year, you have some big liabilities and big assets to record, such as your capital assets? That's something that the town accountant, um, works at the end of the year. It's something you don't record on your books daily? But at the end of the year, they do have to go through and identify any new capital assets and what has been depreciated of prior assets? Some of the other long-term liabilities, like your accrued second vacation time, that have to go on the financial statements? But are not on your regular balance sheet that you submit to the state? And as I mentioned, OPEB and pension liabilities, which are really the biggest numbers in the financial statements. We also have to make sure that your federal grants are properly, um, accounted for? And that you have good internal controls, that what you're reporting to the federal government or the state, if it's a pass-through grant, is accurate? And we follow up on any prior comments that we had in the management letter. So, to go over the financial statements themselves, I know you have copies of them. It's a seventy-page report. I do like to just sort of summarize what's in that report? Because, you know, unlike private corporations, governmental financial statements get a little bit, um, overwhelming. There, it's a big report. The audit opinion that I talked about, what we own is pages one and two only. The rest of it all belongs to the town. The first section is called management's discussion and analysis. That's the explanation of what happens elsewhere in the report. So, why numbers went up or why numbers went down. I like to call that the cliff notes. If you want to read, read one thing, read the M D N A, and that's going to tell you what changed elsewhere in the report. The financial statements themselves, that what we call the basic financial statements? Are shown on both the full accrual and modified accrual or fund-based, um, where the general fund, your operating budget, is shown separately than all the other funds.
If I could just stop you for just one second, Mr. LaFond, do we have these financial statements?
I would ask. Elaine, are those statements?
I don't have the statements.
I know there, I saw them here, so I assume that you have them.
These statements? Oh, then, yes, we have them.
Elaine has the statements. You have all of those there?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, because I was wondering the same thing.
Sorry, I assumed that you, I saw them there. I assumed that you did have them.
We did not get six copies for everybody. I, I always keep one each year, and then we have.
Do you have twenty with you? Do you have F Y twenty?
Yes.
Yeah, and could I know in the past, we've gotten copies for all, every member of the select board?
You should have, you should have them.
I think they asked for, I think Meg asked for it electronically.
And she has them electronically.
Okay, that's the one we would, um, give to you guys.
So, I apologize for that. I'm going to go through the explanation, and we'll make sure you have.
That's fine. If you could, if you could get copies for the other members of the, the members to the select boards, we could follow up that one.
Absolutely. So, I know they were sent out electronically. I assumed where you had them hard copy, that everybody had them. My apologies for that.
Okay, and, and Ms. Weston, if you could just make that available out on the, on the table if anyone wants to review it?
Should be a set out there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'll go make sure.
So, um, I'm going to go ahead and continue with my summarization, but understanding that you don't actually have the reports in front of you. So, again, so when you get them, the M D N A, again, that's the explanation of what happens. Basic financial statements, the first part, the first few pages are the full accrual entity-wide financial statements. That's where you have your OPEB liability, your pension liability, every, all the long-term assets and liability of the town? Then the fund-based reports, which will show you general fund, any of the town's major funds? And all of the other funds combined into one column, what we call non-major. That's the other grants, capital projects, et cetera. In the back, behind the notes to the financial statements, are the required supplementary information. That has, I'm going to say, the budget to actual for general fund. Again, if there's a page you want to focus on, it's looking at your general fund budget to actual. That is the closest to what town meeting votes. That's the budget. And the actual numbers that are booked against that. We spend a lot of focus making sure that the town has good controls? To make sure that the spend, expenditures are properly recorded. And it will show you how, that, that's what leads into your free cash. That's what leads into your available funds. So, that's, um, it's towards the back of the report, but one of the most important pages. Again, in the back of the report, you'll see the Plymouth County Retirement System. We're building up to ten years' worth of schedules. It will show you why your, your liability with Plymouth County goes up and down over, over time? And why the actuarial assumptions lead into those increases and decreases so much. There's some schedules on mass teachers' retirement liability, as well as your OPEB trends? And how your funding the trust fund impacts your long-term liability related to OPEB. So, the results of the audit, unmodified audit opinion, um, that's the, that's a clean opinion. It's the best opinion you can get. It says that there was nothing that led us from giving a clean opinion on your financial statements, that they were presented in accordance with GAAP. There were no significant deficiencies in the audit. There were no material weaknesses that we have to report to you related to your internal controls. And the report on federal, federal grants or federal awards was also unmodified or a clean audit opinion. And just to go over some of the highlights, um, I do have page numbers in the slides, so when you get the report, you'll be able to look at that. But what you'll see in the back on the budget to actual, the town's budget for F Y twenty was over fifty-one million dollars. Your revenues came in over budget, very similar to prior years, five hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars over what you budgeted for revenues. That was a bit of a relief, right? We didn't know what was going to happen with revenues, um, where we, everything closed down towards the end of the fiscal year. We have, I saw that in most communities, that it didn't stop you from being able to collect money. Some of the smaller revenues probably didn't come in as strong as they would have, but certainly, the big numbers did, did hit their targets. Your expenditures and your encumbrances were under budget by eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. I think that's slightly lower than prior years. But it shows that you, you did have good controls. You were able to absorb the costs that you had. I think in some cases, some costs actually went down a little bit, but we certainly had new costs related to the pandemic? That, um, that entities had to endure, and that you were able to absorb that in your budget and still turn back money. So, when that, when those numbers hit, when revenues are over budget, when expenditures come in under budget? That all leads down to improving your undesignated fund balance and tying into your free cash number that gets certified by the state. You did budget to use over one million dollars in free cash to balance the budget for fiscal year twenty. Some of the reasons for that, that, um, similar to last year, North Carver Water District debt service? You had some new things, the town hall complex and senior housing? And some other smaller amounts for the recreation committee startup? And some field maintenance and some infrastructure costs? So, not operating, not operating costs, but other costs to be able to, um, meaningfully use the, your undesignated fund balance. Your total general fund was nine point four million dollars in your financial statements. In your GAAP-based financial statements, the general fund is reported with your stabilization. So, accounting standards require us to combine those two numbers. We'd just like to remind you of that. And as a measure of your liquidity, we like to always look at what you have for fund balance to make sure it's adequate. You, you're twenty-one percent of general fund expenditures, so certainly, you had enough money in your general fund, fund balance. Undesignated fund balance, twelve percent of general fund expenditures.
Could, could you just, if I could just interrupt you for one second, those two numbers there, how do they compare in, in general to other towns?
So, there, you're, you're strong. It's, it's solid. Nothing that we would be concerned with at all. What we like to say is you, you do have financial policies, right? What, I'll, I'll talk like a Moody's or S and P, somebody who's rating the town, wants to make sure that you have set limits, that you know what you want to keep? Like, we want to keep undesignated fund balance between, let's say, ten percent and fifteen percent of our operating budget? To give you enough liquidity, um, that if, that if you have a tough year, that you're able to still provide the operations within your budget. And certainly, the numbers are, are good. And I actually have a slide at the end that I'll show you how that's happened over time, so you'll, you'll like that. And the other part is stabilization, right? So, stabilization is your rainy day fund. We do have a lot of communities last year that voted to use some of their stabilization, because they said, it's, it's a rainy day. It was, um, it's a pandemic, and now they're going forward, coming up with a plan to refurbish that, right? So, if you draw down on your savings because you had an emergency, you want to try to build that back up to whatever your financial policies dictate. Your stabilization fund has gone up. We'll show that over the years. Your general stabilization fund still had three point two million dollars in it. Again, we want to make sure that you have a plan, that you set what your goal is for your stabilization fund. We want to have so much in reserves, and that you have a plan over time to be able to get that. You know, we did this year talk to some of the rating agents, rating agencies to say, what if, right? What if communities are drawing down their stabilization funds because of the pandemic? And in general, as long as, you know, it's a rainy day fund. If there's a rainy day and you use it, that's okay? As long as there's a long-term plan to keep your reserves, to keep building that up over time? That you're not using it to support your operations on a regular basis. And the net pension liability, those, that information all comes directly from the audit of Plymouth County Retirement System. You are required to fund your liability, but you don't have a whole lot of control over that. Your net pension liability was eighteen point nine million dollars, previously twenty-one million. So, it did go down this year. They're about sixty-one percent funded. You are required to be on a funding schedule, um, per state law, and they are now, right now, scheduled to be funded by twenty twenty-nine. The law lets them go out to twenty forty. Right now, their funding schedule is twenty twenty-nine. So, um, that, that one is on target, although it's a painful appropriation, because they do keep going up in the annual appropriations. The OPEB liability, on the other hand, is all town, right? You have full control over that. The difference with OPEB and pension, OPEB, as we know, is other post-employment benefits or the health insurance that you provide to your retirees. And there's no legal requirement right now for you to fund it. The requirement right now is for you to measure it and report it, and there is a mechanism for you to fund it. And the town has started putting money aside in an OPEB trust fund to start to pre-fund that. You're not on a funding schedule like you are with pension? But having the money in your OPEB trust fund is helping to keep the liability down slightly. So, you have a valuation done every two years where they remeasure that liability based on your actual employment, health insurance rates, mortality. based on your actual employment, health insurance rates, mortality tables, and all the assumptions that are going into that. Your discount rate that you're using right now for your OPEB is 6.5 million. You have 1.5 million in your trust fund, but the liability for OPEB is still $37, $37 million of unfunded liability reported on your statement of net position. And again, in the back of those financial statements, because these numbers are so reliant on the actuarial assumptions, and they're changing over time, they're building 10-year trends in the back so that you can see how putting money aside is helping to offset the cost of that liability over time. Governmental debt, there was no new debt issued this year. Outstanding debt, $35.9 million. You actually retired 1.7 million as a measure of liquidity, and to look at your, your, your ability to keep operating and providing the town services, you always like to look at the percentage of your debt service. You don't want debt service to be eating so much of your operating budget that you can't provide for the other services of the town. 6%, very, you know, very, very reasonable debt service. Capital assets, I mentioned this earlier, something that's done at the end of the year only for the financial statements. It's not something that the town accountant keeps on a regular day-to-day basis. You had about five, almost $5 million worth of additions, most of it for school, public safety and public works, and some of the, some of your, your local infrastructure. And other balance sheet components, your cash and investments, a total of 27, almost $28 million in cash and investments, plus the $1.5 million in the OPEB trust. You had about $3.7 million worth of receivables. Most of those relate to fully collectible receivables, right? So we collect all of our real estate taxes, personal property taxes, and most of motor vehicle excise is very collectible. So most of that is fully collectible. Accrued liabilities at the end of the year, timing, different timing, and about $3.2 million. So pages 16 and 17, that's where we have the financial trends that I thought you would, you would like to see. We presented this to you last year as well, and this really is showing how implementing the OPEB trust over time has increased your reserves. And if you look between '19 and '20, there were not, it was not a big change. It wasn't a huge growth year, but things stayed pretty consistent with prior years. But really, coming up from 2000, you know, for the, the past several years, you'll see how your reserves have improved and have increased. So we are showing you your stabilization fund balance, your general fund balance, as well as the OPEB balances over the past several years. And then for the single audit, the single audit is the audit of your federal financial awards. We come in and take a look at your, your total expenditures of federal awards. We have to do a risk assessment to identify which awards should be tested. Typically with the town is special education, of one, over $1 million in federal expenditures, $497,000 with special education grants. So we do what's called a compliance or program-specific audit of your, of that particular program. That compliance audit was a clean audit, there were no findings. It's a program that's been around for a number of years, it operates the same way pretty much every year. You have a good process to be able to report information to the state timely and accurately. So clean opinion, no findings. You know, the big thing to remember is next year, we will probably be focusing more on the COVID funds. You didn't spend enough in, in CARES money or COVID-related funds, federal funds, in '20 to impact the audit related to that. But we certainly think in '21 slash '22, especially with the ARPA money that's coming in, we probably won't be paying attention to the special education grant quite as much because we're going to have to shift our focus to the, to the ARPA money. And the management letter, I mentioned before, there were no material weaknesses, there were no significant deficiencies. What we do always like to tell you is things that we identify during the audit that we think you should know. Lower dollar amounts, but areas where the internal controls could or should be improved. And we like to follow through on those comments until they're either resolved or the town says, okay, we heard it, and we're deciding that we're not, we're not going to act on that. So we had three comments from prior years that, that are still, I'm going to say that are still somewhat unresolved. One is looking at cash collections in different departments. So you have some departments that are actually collecting money, that it would be more secure if those funds were collected in the collector's office, where they're more set up to be able to collect cash. Overall, cash collections are not very high. What we're finding, the trends, especially in, with COVID, is that more and more people are paying bills online, that cash collections are going down. So the validity of the comment has probably reduced a little bit, although there was nothing done really to, to change that. And we'll take a look at it again next year to see if it's worth, if it's worth reporting. The other two are reconciliation. So there are, there's a reconciliation of North Carver Water District receivables. There were some changes in the process, the billing process was moved to the treasurer collector's, collector's office. They're still having a hard time reconciling, and it's more of a software issue that the department is trying to address. And the other is a housing loan receivable, and that's just reconciling the detail to the ledger. It's only $21,000, but we wanted to make you aware of that that wasn't happening. And then the new comments this year, one relates to procurement card controls, that's at the school department. So P-cards are used in lieu of credit cards to be able to purchase things. Your online purchasing right now makes things very, very convenient. However, with, with municipal funds, we have procurement laws that we have to follow, and controls that have to happen, there should be an approval process before the town's funds are actually committed. So strong controls over any kind of credit card or procurement card are really, really important. And so our recommendations really are for them to document their controls, make sure that they have strong controls at the school department over these P-cards that they're using, and that they're giving all of the backup for the purchases to the town accountant office. The other is the reconciliation of escrow accounts. Again, this is not, this is not an unusual one, but what happens is the town typically, any town, collects escrow funds. It's usually a planning department that takes the money in, projects happen, and then there should be a process to close out. Either the funds are returned, in some cases to the developer, or they actually become funds of the town. Those funds just haven't been reconciled the way they should be. So again, smaller dollar amounts don't impact your financial statements a lot, but things that we identified during the process that we want to make you aware of. That's it for the summary. Sorry again that you didn't have the reports in front of you, we will make sure that you get the reports. And as always, if you have, this is a pretty good summary of them, but if you have any questions on them, we're happy to address them.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, I have.
Mr. Belton?
I'll use the last page here, the management letter. For cash collections, do you have a listing of which departments that we need to be concerned about to say?
Yes, there were, yes, there were three, I believe there were only three of them. And, do I have it in front of me? I don't. So it was, it was mostly licenses and permits, and we actually have the support for those, and the accounting office and the treasurer's office was aware of those.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not most, right? Most, it's not an issue with most, it was mostly licenses and permits. I think we actually also talked to the Council on Aging. Some of these are really small departments, and in some cases, it would not be convenient to make those payment, those collection processes come to town hall, right? If you're in a different building, it would be very inconvenient to a taxpayer to have to come to town hall. So when we talked to the people on the Council on Aging, our recommendation for them was that they just have a register. Have a cash register to make sure you have good controls and processes to collect money. If it's a department in town hall collecting permits, our recommendation is they come to the treasurer collector's office.
That was going to be my next one, what is your suggestion on how to do it?
Yeah, the safest way, one is to really collect as little cash as possible. Encourage people to pay online if they can, but you know, if somebody comes in and they want to pay with cash, you don't want to not accept it. Much safer for them to come up to the treasurer collector's office, they give them the money, they get a receipt, and then they can conduct their business with the department.
And then for the requisition, the escrow accounts, is there a listing of those escrow accounts of?
Yes, so the problem is, the listing is not the same. So there's a difference between the balances that the treasurer has, which are actually separate bank accounts, the amounts that are recorded in the ledger, and then the departmental records. So there's a three-way reconciliation that has to happen, so we don't know which one is correct. The treasurer's balance, the general ledger balance, or the department's balances. So they need to sort of get together and say, which, and who knows the history of these, and which ones are accurate, which ones, you know. There's a chance that the ledger's correct, and that maybe the treasurer should have closed out an account and didn't over time. And these are not new, these are old balances that have been, that have been around for a while. So there's a three-way reconciliation that has to happen, we don't know which one is, are the accurate records.
Okay, so that's something we have to really keep an eye on.
Yeah.
Okay, because we need to protect our money.
Yes, it's a fiduciary responsibility. Small dollars, but you do want to make sure that if the town's supposed to have the money, that you take it back in, and if it belongs to a third party, that you've accounted for it properly.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Anyone else? If I could just ask you one, one question, like, we could go back to page 15, and just the, the debt service, where you said it was 6% of the budget, how does that compare to, to other towns?
Probably about average.
Okay.
And I will say, usually you want to make sure your debt service, right? It's not eating so much of your budget, right? You don't want it to be taking over. You want to keep it somewhat consistent, because if it goes too low, does that mean that you're not keeping up with, right? That you're, that something's going to hit, that you're not keeping up with town buildings, or your infrastructure, or things that you would have to borrow long-term for? If it goes too high, that's an indication that, right, it's going to start tapping into your, your other departments. So you really want to have it, you want to have it in your policies. We like to keep debt service between, you know, 5% and 10% of our operating budget, something to that effect. And to stay within that and not kind of be jumping around. So as debt comes off your books, usually that's a good time with a long-term financial plan to say, what's our next big project that we have?
Thank you. Nothing else from anyone? Mr. LaFond, do you have anything?
No, I've kind of already had this conversation, and I'll catch her on the way out, but I think I want to thank you. You hit all the key points. I would like to say that I think if you look at the comments, the lack thereof, I think is a testament to our financial staff overall. Would you agree with that?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Yeah, it's a pretty thin management letter.
Thank you very much, we really appreciate it. And you'll get, you'll get the financial statements out to all the members of the board, right?
I will.
Thank you.
She'll, she'll email them to us.
Thank you.
Forward them along.
Thank you.
And just for clarification, you want hard copies and electronic?
I think, I think we'd all like a hard copy, absolutely.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up tonight is a discussion with our town council. Greg Corbo on the Town Administrator Screening Committee. A discussion and possible vote on the opinion from town council on a possible conflict of interest, and possible vote on replacement of previously-appointed at-large members of the Town Administrator Screening Committee. Mr. Corbo, welcome.
Good evening, everyone, nice to see you.
So previously, Mr. Corbo provided the board with an opinion as to whether some of the previous, previously-appointed members of the screening committee actually may have a conflict and should probably be, not be on that committee. So I know some of the members of the board probably have questions for Mr. Corbo, so why don't we start? Do any members of the board have questions for Mr. Corbo?
I think it's a question here, the packet that we got had some, some blanks. The at-large members, it just says Adam Holmes. What has happened with Paul Kelly and Margaret Wood?
So I think.
Mr. Chair, could we let the, our council explain, or?
Absolutely.
I mean.
I was just going to say that.
We have him here, let's let him.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, although when I gave my opinion, I wasn't opining on specifically-named individuals, so I'm not quite sure what, what list Jen is looking at.
Right, so, so previously, we appointed three members to the at-large screening committee. We appointed Adam Holmes, Margaret Wood, and Paul Kelly. I think subsequently to that, some of these members may have a conflict. Mrs. Wood, I think, myself, and I think perhaps some other members of the board, did not think she was a town employee, we thought she was employed by a, a different. I think she was employed by, by GATRA, but that's subsequently not the case. Paul Kelly is a spouse of a town employee. So I think what we need to decide here is whether she, we, because of the conflicts, we should replace them as at-large members of the screening committee. And that's the first item that I think we need to discuss. So what are the thoughts of the board? Mr. Belton?
So I just, who, who created this here, this first page that we have? Because I kind of have an issue, and I, I did send an email to council about James Dayhill. It says spouse of a town employee, but the town clerk is an elected official. She's not hired by the town administrator. Any benefit she gets, she gets like every other town employee, so there is no conflict with that. And it's highlighted here saying that we can't have him, so I think that he should be on the list.
Again, and I think I, seeing, I, I was copied on the response from Mr. Corbo on that. It came so late that I just thought we could discuss it tonight, so I didn't send it out to the rest of the board. But yes, I think Mr. Dayhill, judging by Mr. Corbo's opinion, is certainly eligible to be a member of the, of the screening committee.
Mr. Chair, could we ask Mr. Corbo to clarify James Dayhill? Because he's married to the town clerk, who, as Mr. Belton said, is an elected official.
Yes, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So the issue is, does not depend on whether or not the individual is a town employee. The issue is whether or not the individual is appointed or supervised by the town administrator. And so the idea is that you can't have someone on this committee whose compensation is, might be affected by who they decide to recommend for the position of town administrator. So if the town administrator has control over their compensation, or their conditions of employment, or whether or not they continue to be employed by the town, then they, they likely have a financial interest in who becomes the town administrator. So, and, and that also applies to their, their spouses, their children, and any other members of their immediate family. However, in the circumstance of, of the town clerk, the town clerk is an elected official, her compensation is set by town meeting. The town administrator does not have any supervision or control over her. So even though she is a town employee, she does not have a financial interest in who becomes town administrator, and therefore neither would her spouse, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? So based on the opinion of council, we have, we have two individuals who we appointed at our last meeting who the board may feel have a conflict and we, we may want to consider replacing. One is Mr. Kelly, who is the spouse of a town employee, whose employment is controlled by the town administrator. One is, is Margaret Wood, who's a town employee and whose employment and compensation is controlled by the town administrator. Mr. Holmes does not have, have those issues. So what are the thoughts of the board on replacing Mr. Kelly and Ms. Wood? Yes, Mr. Belton?
So, I understand the, the thought process on this, and I, I really thought about this a lot. And I understand your opinion on this, but I'm thinking, these are two people that have been within this town for many, many years. I have more concern, even though I was in favor of Margaret Wood, I thought she was a GATRA employee.
I was, I did as well.
So that's why, really, I thought she'd be an excellent opportunity for the town. But the spouse, Paul Kelly, I, that one, on the other hand, I'm like, he's not an employee for the town. And if you take away spouses, I mean, you limit a lot of people that work within this town, and the family members, and kids, and whatnot, from ever saying, well, gee, I, I guess I can't go for this or go for that. So I still would like to keep Paul Kelly on as a, as a candidate that we've already voted on, as long as he fills out a, a disclosure form with the town clerk's office.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, isn't it in the conflict of interest law, though, that, that spousal relationships and so on? I mean, that that just can't happen in a case like this?
So when there's a, a financial interest in a matter. So when there's a, a financial interest in a matter, the financial interest runs to the employee, their spouse, their children, and their business partners. And, you know, I, I understand the, the conundrum that you have here. And, you know, the, the problem is, is that, you know, the town administrator has a lot of appointment and supervisory authority. And that's why you're having so much trouble. You know, for example, if you were having a, a police chief search committee, we wouldn't be having these issues. You would say no police officers be on the committee. And that would be that, and it would be open to everyone else. But the problem is, is that, you know, the, the town administrator does have a lot of, of appointment authority under your bylaws in the Town Administrator Act. And so, you know, that's why you're finding it so difficult. In my opinion, this wouldn't spill over into other, you know, positions within the town. The other difficulty that, that you're, that you're facing is that under the law for appointed employees, they can overcome their financial interest in a matter by making a disclosure and having the written approval of their appointing authority. The problem here is that the person who would give that approval is the town administrator. And then they would have a conflict in putting, essentially putting people on the search committee who would then have control over whether or not the person gets recommended for a permanent spot, or, or whether someone else gets recommended. So, you know, it, it's a multiple, multiple level of, of conflict here that, that's making it even more difficult than it would be in the ordinary sense. And, you know, while, you know, certainly you're, you're free to, to make appointments. You know, we could argue that these financial interests are, are remote and speculative. But, you know, if that's the case, I would recommend that the individual seek an opinion from the Ethics Commission to protect themselves. Because this is one area in which, you know, if there is a violation found, the individual is at risk. And they, they could be some, subject to fines or sanctions by the Ethics Commission. So, you know, I, I've given a, a conservative opinion for that reason. Because I don't want to, you know, jeopardize or, or expose anyone to liability. But certainly, you know, if you feel strongly about appointing them and they feel strongly about serving, I, I would suggest reaching out to the Ethics Commission for, you know, a, a disinterested or a separate opinion. Just to make sure that they are on, you know, perfectly solid grounds there.
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. So, so just to follow up on that, in your letter to us, you also said in that whole conundrum of who appoints who? When, when? So for example, in the case of Mr. Kelly, whose wife is the Director of the Council on Aging, appointed by Mr. LaFond currently. He could write a letter, could, who would write the letter? Would Mr. Kelly write the letter to Mr. LaFond? Because then you mentioned, because he is potentially going to be on the list of potential permanent town administrators, he would have to then bring that request to the Select Board. And we would have to, because we're his appointing authority, we would have to be okay with it as a board.
That, that's correct, so.
So who would write that letter? Mr. Kelly or Mrs. Kelly?
So I believe it would be Mr. Kelly would write the letter to Mr. LaFond. And what he would have to say, you know, he would have to disclose that his spouse is an employee of the town, who is appointed by the town administrator and therefore has a financial interest in the search committee. However, that that interest is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the service which the municipality may expect from the employee. So that would have to go to Mr. LaFond as Mrs. Kelly's appointing authority. However, it's my opinion that Mr. LaFond, as a potential candidate for a permanent town administrator, has a financial interest in making that decision. So he would then have to write a letter to you as his appointing authority saying, I would like to have the ability to approve of town employees sitting on the search committee. And I do not think that doing that would be so substantial as to likely affect the integrity of my services of the town. And so then you would have to approve of the town administrator making that decision. If you do, then the town administrator would have to make the decision as to any of the employees who have a financial interest, as to whether or not they could attend. And I mean, it's, it's messy, to be perfectly honest.
Yeah, it is messy. Because in the, in the current town administrator's letter to us, wouldn't he be essentially saying that it wasn't going to affect his, his financial status? Which is clearly not really true.
It would be substantial, right? And I mean, essentially, he's picking and choosing who gets to be on the search committee.
Yeah, that would not work, yeah.
Mr. Belbin, did you have? Did you have something?
Yeah, I, now, the Board of Selectmen can overrule an appointment by the town administrator for a position. Or if we saw something that was done, we could turn around and challenge that. I.e. if the Council on Aging Director's contract, something was not right that we saw in it, we could thus turn around and overrule that, correct?
Are you talking about appointments or like discipline?
No, I'm talking about in, in the sense of finances, all right? For, because she has a contract with the town. So.
She's on a wage and classification plan. She doesn't have a specific contract.
Yeah, that's-
So there is no contract with it? Because we had one before with the other one. So I assume we had a one? No, okay.
She's just on a town's wage and classification.
Sorry, I did not know that.
But, but my, my-
And so if we had a-
I'm sorry.
A contract, I'm sorry, Sarah, to interrupt. But if we did have a contract employee, like for example, I was informed that for both the police chief and the fire chief, the town administrator does sit on, on some sort of committee when they come up for, when their contracts come up for renewal. But that their contracts don't come up for renewal for like another five years. And so because there's nothing that the town administrator can do to them now, he's not there, there, he doesn't supervise them. And, you know, his seat on this committee is not going to come up again for another five years. In that circumstance, I thought that any financial interest would be remote and speculative. Because who knows who's going to be in that seat five years from now.
And, and my concern, Mr. Chair, is that by, by doing that convoluted thing whereby, you know, Mr. Kelly writes to Mr. LaFond, and Mr. LaFond writes to us. And we say, we're essentially, it would, it wouldn't be truthful. Because there is a huge financial interest on different people's part.
Mr. Hoffman?
Obviously, this was, this was tough because we thought, you know, I was talking about personalities. And, and I think everybody that applied, you know, have a great character. And, and they were all worthy candidates. So if, if Margaret Wood cannot, according to Mr. Corbo, serve on the screening committee, I don't see what the difference between the spouse of a town employee and the town employee. And I, I don't want to get tiki-tack, but again, it's just the, the optics of it.
Yeah.
Especially what's happened in the past. We want to make sure the screening committee is, is 100% upfront and honest with everybody. It, it is a tough, it is a tough decision. And I was one of the ones that brought up some questions because it had been asked for me, for me. And I didn't have an answer. That's why originally I, I sent in a couple of questions, because I didn't think about Mr. Kelly. I thought, I thought of Mr. Kelly, not Mrs. Kelly.
Right.
And then Margaret Wood, I thought, was employed by GATRA. So I didn't realize that, that. I think a couple of us did, so. And first of all, thank you for giving us some clarification. And it's, you know.
And if I could, I think a couple of points Mr. Hoffman brought up are very important. I think first of all, the, the optics of this are very important. It's very important that this committee look like it's pre-oven conferences and, and independent. And also, we have, we are under time pressure here. I mean, this, you know, Mr. Mr. Corbo, you mentioned, mentioned that folks should probably get an opinion from Ethics. And when we have a process that needs to start, we have a very tight timeline. And if it gets held up by, by anything, it, it's going to put them either farther behind the eight ball. So I think it's important that we're, we're able to move forward and that screening committee is able to move forward on a timely basis. So.
Can I?
Yes.
In your email from Thursday, Mr. Corbo, in this paragraph, "In the opinions referenced below, the State Ethics Commission interpreted Section 19 as prohibiting public employees from participating in decisions affecting the compensation of their appointing authorities. In each of these examples, however, the employee's compensation was currently in negotiations. The commission found further that if no negotiations were ongoing or the terms of the employee's employment would not be affected by the hiring of a new appointing authority, the interest would be remote and speculative." Well, if, if Ms. Kelly is on a, the rate or wage scale that you said, then I don't think that would fit that. And then I don't know how, how Ms. Wood is being paid. But I don't, are their compensations currently in negotiation? Either Ms. Wood or Ms. Kelly? So then based on what you wrote, that would be remote and speculative? And thus, okay?
But they're still appointed by the TIA?
It's what you wrote, okay?
Oh, I, no, I understand. I, I read it through.
Can the town administrator accord on the pay grade? Or can he change the pay grade?
He could recommend it, I guess.
So he could recommend a pay grade, up, upgrade?
It says currently in negotiations, I'm-
But what, what I'm, what my question is, can at any time a town administrator upgrade a town employee? Or, or someone that's on that pay scale? Again, I have no idea.
Well, I think town, town meeting approves the, when they approve the budget, they're approving the pay scale. But the, but the town administrator could recommend that. It's happened in the past.
So, so in, in each of those, those ethics opinions, the issue there was that the employee at issue was a union employee. And the person who was being sought to be put on the committee would have authority over negotiating that union contract. And at that time, those agreements were in active negotiations. And so as I said earlier, if, if you had a situation where a person had an agreement and they were going to be employed for a certain period of time, then it, it's likely that their interest would be considered remote and speculative. And, and I don't know. And as I said at the beginning, I didn't know who any of these people were. So I, I was just giving a, a general opinion. The, the second part of that, though, is that if somebody is an employee who is supervised by the town administrator and the town administrator could, could discipline them, could, could suspend them or, or fire them, then I think that is a second element of potential financial interest.
So then what about people who are on committees right now that are appointed by the town administrator? What is the difference there?
Okay, so what I thought was the difference was that if, if you had a person who was on a committee and that person receives a stipend, right? Because if they're not paid, then, then there's nothing to talk about. It's, it's only compensation. So, and it's my understanding that there are some people who are on committees who receive stipends and who are appointed by the town administrator. And so the, the line that, that I feel like should be drawn is that if there is someone on a committee who's a, who is going to be up for reappointment at the end of this year, which is while this process is going on, then they would likely have an, a foreseeable financial interest because their appointment is, is up now. Versus somebody who might have a five-year appointment and their appointment is not up for renewal for another four years, then their financial interest might be more remote and speculative.
So the two, if I, if I may, so the two, for example, finance committee members are not up for reappointment between now and December. That's, that's my understanding. So that's, that's their particular case.
Well, and I, I think what we need to do at this point is to, to just try to move along a little bit and, and make a decision on the individual members that are in question and decide whether we, we feel that they should be replaced or not. So it is no question about Adam Holmes. So for Mr. Kelly, i- is, is there a motion from the board to replace Mr. Kelly?
I'll make a motion to replace Mr. Kelly.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Kelly's listening. This is not personal on any of these people.
So further discussion on, on Mr. Kelly?
I, I just want a quick question, just to echo what Sarah's saying. None of this is personal. I've, I've got a couple of comments thrown my way. Nothing is personal about this. This is, I'm, I'm taking the position that these people are in, not the person that's in. The same with last meeting, when about the interim town administrator being a finalist. It wasn't the person, it's the, it's the job, their, their title. So I hope nobody gets offended by this. We're just trying to do what's right. As we all know, what happened in the past, that's why some of us are on the board now. We're going to make sure everything is, passes the smell test, if you will. That's why I think we err, err on the side of caution for this. That's why I'm saying that. That's why I, I made that motion.
Any further discussion? Mr. Belbin?
Yeah, I, I have the utmost respect for Mr. Kelly. I've known him for, ever since I came here into this town. So I know his experience, his knowledge, and his character. So I'd like to keep him in there, but I understand the optics of everything. So I will. Thank you.
And if I could just add that I agree with what's been said. None of this is personal, but I think the optics are very important here. And I, and I also don't want to put anyone in a position where they'd have a problem with ethics. So are there any, any further comments? Hearing none. All in favor of replacing Mr. Kelly on the screening committee?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Four to one. Then we get to Mrs. Wood. Is there a motion to replace Ms. Wood on the screening committee?
I'll make the motion to replace Mrs. Margaret Wood.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Yeah.
Same, the same. I have respect for both people, but again.
Correct.
We have to be consistent in our decisions.
Yeah, it's, it's a shame, but.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. And like I said, I thought she'd be great. As you've been active in this town for many, many years and.
I agree.
Thank you.
And, and I agree with everything that's said. Hearing that, all in favor of replacing Ms. Wood on the screening committee? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Four to one. Mr. Mr. Corbo, if you wouldn't mind just hanging around for a few minutes while we vote on replacements, just in case there's any questions from the board on whether anyone's eligible or not. With the permission of the board, I wonder if we could take the seven o'clock item out of order here and vote on the business community representative? Only because one of those applicants is also an applicant for the at-large position. And I think if, what, if we had voted him as the business committee, that would take him out of running for the at-large position. So any, any, any issues there?
So, so Mr. Chair, I think we should be clear that the two applicants for the business community representative are Kevin Tracy and Walter Cole. And Kevin Tracy is also on the list to be appointed as an at-large member.
That is exactly right. I was actually going to read the seven, ten, seven o'clock biz item, but that's, that's the gist of it. So we've obviously had a chance to review everybody's application and their qualifications. Is there a, is there a motion on the applicant for the business community?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Walter Cole as the business representative for the Town Administration Screening Committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second now.
Discussion?
My, my thought process is we need as many newcomers to come in here. And he's been active in this town. And also, I just feel that it's an opportunity to get somebody else here in this town, active in this town. And I like to see that and. And I like to see that and, um, that's why.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of Walter Cole as the, uh, Business Community Representative to the Town Administrator Screening Committee? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. All right. So now, going back to the previous item, we have two, uh, applica- we have two nominations for the Town Administrator Screening Committee. I thought perhaps since we agreed at the last committee to, last meeting to go with folks, two for our pref- our top preference and one for our second preference, perhaps we could go around the room and do it the same way this time. Seems to make sense. Any, any discussion of that? Hearing none. Uh, I will. Ms. Weston, are you willing? All right. So I would, uh, I would say my top, my, I'll start. My top choice, uh, two for Mary Ross and one for Pat Mahar. Ms. Hewens?
Um, my, I, I would have the same vote then, two for Mary Ross and one for Pat Mahar.
Mr. Hoffman?
I don't want to sound like a copycat, but I have two for Mary Ross and one for Pat Mahar.
Ms. Bogart?
Two for Gail Nowin and one for Jim Nowin.
And Mr. Belbin?
And, uh, uh, two for Deb Gesado. I'm sorry if I screwed your name up. I apologize. And, uh, one for James Dayhill.
All right. So Ms. Weston?
Okay, so it would be Mary Ross and Pat Mahar.
I'm sorry?
Mary Ross and Pat Mahar.
Could you read those numbers?
Um, six for Mary Ross, three for Pat Mahar, two for Deb Jeswaldo, one for Jim Nowin, one for Jim Dayhill.
And two for Gail Nowin.
I'm sorry. Two for Gail Nowin. Sorry, Gail.
All right. So if I could just, just recap for the, for the public, uh, the nine members of our Town Administrator Screening Committee are Jennifer Pratt. She's the school committee representative. Alan Jermaine, he's the finance committee representative. Bruce Mackey, he's the planning board representative. Tom Walsh and Craig Weston, they're our public safety chiefs. Our at-large members are Adam Holmes, Mary Ross, and Pat Mahar. And our business community representative is Walter Cole. Mr. Corbo, thank you.
Just, just a few minutes. Are we actually voting on these two new ones here or?
I think we just did.
Okay.
I think, I believe we just did. So we have a, we have a screening committee. Anything else for Mr. Corbo?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Good to see you.
Thank you, Greg.
All right. Next up on our agenda is a discussion and possible vote for creation of a finance committee, a finance committee bylaw subcommittee for the purpose of rewriting the bylaw for the next town meeting to consist of two members of the select board and two members of the finance committee and to be dissolved at the town meeting when the bylaw is proposed. I, I know we've had some, some back and forth on the town, on the finance committee bylaw. And this was, this was my thought, uh, just a way of trying to get together with the finance committee and find some common ground in a bylaw that we could all support. And I wanted to put it before the board and get your thoughts. So I'm curious to hear them. Any, any discussion on this?
All right. I just want to say one thing. If, if people are looking at me and you see my eye drooping, I'm not having a stroke. I got stung by a bee before I came into here. So I feel my eye like swelling up right now. Okay, but it's okay. I'm good. There's no, nothing going on here. But, um, yeah, I think we do need to have a, um, a subcommittee to, uh, go over it with the finance committee and, um, really to hash out some things before we go to town meeting. Because we all want to be, make sure everything is clean, neat, and we all agree upon it. And there's no banging our heads against the wall and, uh, fighting. Because we're all in this together. We all were looking for the best interest of this town.
And just so the board is aware, I did hear from Mr. Jermaine. And if we approve this tonight, then he will put it on the next finance committee agenda to do the same. So any, any further discussion on this?
Quick question. So the, the goal is to put this on the next town meeting?
I, I think the goal would be yes. I think the goal is to put a finance committee bylaw on the next town meeting and, um, brings a clarity to the whole situation.
I agree a hundred percent. I think it's a great idea to have both committees worked.
So are there, are there two members of the select board who would be interested in serving this bylaw, on this subcommittee?
I'll vote. I'll, I'll go into this.
Mr. Belbin, anyone else?
I'll volunteer.
And Ms. Hewens?
Yes.
All right. So, uh, would there be a motion to appoint, uh, Mr. Belbin and Ms. Hewens as the select board representatives to the, the subcommittee?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second. Can I, can I second it?
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ms. Bogart, are you an aye on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It is unanimous. Uh, our next item, uh, to ratify the operation and maintenance contract. We did not have an opportunity to talk about this in our previous executive session. So we will be entering into executive session at the end of this meeting. And then we'll be, we will come back in open session to vote on this. So this item will have to be passed over until then. Uh, so, uh, next up is discussion and possible vote on the appointment of additional member to the Carver, Marion, Wareham Regional Refuge Disposal Co- District. And I know, Mr. Belbin, this is something you asked for.
I have a vote. Uh, did we miss seven, ten discussion and possible vote to advertise the town administrator position? Did we pass that one?
Yes, we did. Thank you. Uh, we'll go back to that. Uh, so discussion and possible vote to advertise the town administrator, uh, position. Mr. Hoffman, I think this is something you asked for.
Yes, I'd ask for this. Um, I just wanted to discuss with everybody if we were open to advertise the position now versus waiting for the screening committee to get together, to meet. They have to look at chairperson. They have to do all that. I just think, like Mr. Townsend had said earlier, times are the essence. I don't think it can hurt to advertise the position now. I'm sure with Elaine and her staff know the proper channels to, to advertise it, uh, the publications and things like that. So I just wanted to get everyone's opinion on that. If they thought it'd be okay to maybe jump, you know, get a head start on that, be a little proactive on it.
Thoughts on the board? Ms. Hewens?
I guess, I guess my feeling, um, Mr. Hoffman, is that if we were trying to be, um, as hands-off as possible with this screening committee, then maybe we should just let them do that. I mean, we, they know who they are tonight. And so hopefully they're going to get sworn in, meet as soon as possible. I think, I would assume they all know we have a tight schedule. I don't know. I, I think, and, and also their, their consultant, whoever they use, will be able to do that for them.
I guess my question, I, I'm sorry, Bob.
No, I, I totally understand where you're going. And, uh, had we not voted at the last meeting to basically force them to use a, um, a service, um, then that would be something I think that we could do to put it out there to, at least to the MMA, to advertise it there. Um, but since we're going to end up paying somebody to do it, I mean, it's going to be probably within their contract that they have to pay for the advertisement of it with their services. So why should we pay for it twice? Just my opinion.
Any further discussion?
So I, I guess my question is, um, if we post something and MMA is like, that's, that's the publication. And then the recruiter or, I guess, is that the term recruitment?
Consultant.
Consultant.
Yeah.
The consultant. So that mean they wouldn't do that and therefore charge us for it? Again, I don't know how the pars- process works, so I'm just asking.
Usually what, one of these consulting firm, uh, they'd first meet with the screening committee. They'd probably discuss things like what, you know, qualities you're looking for. You know, you'd, you know, do a thorough review of the bylaw and put, put together some prospectus on the community itself. Now, some of that's pretty much cut and paste, um, format-wise. Um, and then they would go about advertising. Now, obviously MMA is the most preeminent place of, that, that you would advertise and might advertise in a, you know, national publication, but predominantly it's MMA. That doesn't take a lot of time. But some of the lead time in terms of meeting with the screening committee and, and determining how you want to go about the process, that, that, that can take a little bit of time, but the, usually it's the consultant who will actually do the advertising. And the consultant might also be, uh, go to the point where, where they are looking to actually making phone calls, you know, to try, you know, to, uh, certain people, see if they'd be interested in a position like that. So that's, so it's more than just advertising, um, but it's also, again, doing, being a little proactive. But effectively, that's something the, uh, the consultant would do when they release some prospectus on the community itself. It doesn't have to be that way, but that's usually what you're paying for. I think it would be unusual to not have the consultant advertise. Not saying it can't happen, but that's, that's just usual.
Well, that's why I was asking. I just, I, I just was looking at the timeline that we have. It's pretty tight. And thought I'd, well, you know, again, I wasn't sure what, what the harm is and for us to. But I can, I can understand like Bob, what you had just said, that if we're hiring them, again, they have to meet, they, you know, like Mr. LaFond just said, now they have to put together a little presentation. And now that, that could be a two, three week timeline.
Well, if, if I may, Mr. Chair, I, and I see your point too, um, Jim, but we would have to do the same thing. We would have to put together our description and, you know, and, and that, of course, would be all on our staff, um, who have a lot of other things to do. So I don't know which would be quicker or slower, but it just seems like these, these consultants are the ones who know how to do this. And I wouldn't begin to tell Elaine how to do this because I have no clue.
Okay. Again, that's, I just wanted to bring it up. It was just, I was just, again, just concerned with the timeline and wasn't sure if that was an option. If everyone's against it, that's fine. I have no problem with that. I just wanted to.
I could just, just point out, and this probably isn't going to help, but the advantage in this particular case is you do have a pretty tight bylaw. A lot of communities, that's not the case. So you're like, in some ways, almost starting from, from scratch and in terms of what it, what's this person doing? How do we define the duties? Uh, because it's, it's, it's loose. There isn't a specific bylaw or charter that defines the position. That's not the case here. So that would certainly help, I think, in terms of moving it along more quickly in other communities, perhaps.
Okay. Mr. Hoffman, that, you okay with that? All right. Moving along, back to the item. Uh, discussion and possible vote for the appointment of an additional member to the Carver, Marion, Wareham Regional Refuge District, Disposal District. Mr. Belbin?
All right. So I posted that on Facebook and, um, we have one position filled. Mr. Carter, from what I've been told, is, uh, this is going to be his last month. And if that is the case, because I haven't received anything from him officially saying that he won't be there, but we're going to need a third person. For us, we need to have three people on that board. It's extremely important. We do have some things that we need to discuss and vote on. The, the biggest rationale is we need a quorum. It's a six-person board now, so, uh, we need four members to at least hold a meeting just to pay bills. And, um, as I said, we need three. Bottom line is, we need three people. Um, one of the biggest things that will be coming up is hopefully creating a new, um, agreement between Carver and Wareham. That's going to take some time over the next year, uh, to a year and a half for us to get through that. But the biggest thing about the, um, Regional Refuge Disposal District, even though we really don't run a transfer station, uh, is that we have a lot of money there that we have to protect. We need to protect that money. We need to blast that money out for the next twenty, twenty-five, thirty years. And that's the bottom line. We need the membership to turn around and guide the district over these next few years and then the coming years. But we need three members. So, and as the chairperson, I'm begging anybody who has finance, finance experience, or just a willingness that they agree to protect the money because we, we lost a lot of money over the years. And we can't lose anything else. So. Uh, my, my thought process was if we can't get somebody from the public out here to do it, then another board of selectmen members is going to have to step up.
Sort of quick question. Does Wareham have three members or just two?
Currently Wareham has two members. But if we get three members, they're going to get three members too.
Okay.
All right. Um, so, but if we have four members, we couldn't have our last meeting because we didn't have four members showing up. One couldn't make it and can't run, um, run the district. We can't pay our bills, all right, if we don't have a meeting. So, um, typically we meet the last Wednesday of the month at five o'clock. I'm hoping that we can extend that to every other month. Hopefully by September, October, um, just to find out what Wareham's doing with the transfer station. So, um, yeah, it's, it's up to the board. But next month, I mean, if, if we don't have another person for our next me- after our next meeting in July, um, we could have that same problem with, oh, I had car trouble. I couldn't come. And, um, then we can't have a meeting. So then it bumps it over to another month. Uh, one of the other things that we did do is, uh, we did get a subscription for Zoom, uh, where we could do our meetings by Zoom. Hopefully the legislature goes ahead and says that we can continue to do that because that helps us all out. Because we're all busy. We're all doing stuff. And, um, instead of driving down to Wareham or driving to Carver for it, that'll help us out a lot because that's what we end up doing. We end up alternating back and forth, one town hall to the next to run our meetings. But that's it. Thank you.
So currently there are three members. Mr. Carter's still on it?
Right now, Mr. Carter is on it, but like I said, I've been told that he's, uh, going to step down. Uh, so we have to be prepared for that.
Ms. Weston, do you know, have we heard anything from Mr. Carter about whether he wants to be reappointed?
I'm not sure on that. I'd have to check.
Okay.
I don't recall that.
Okay. All right. Well, why don't we, why, I'm going to check right now.
Move it, move it on to next month. We can put it, put it on the agenda.
Yeah, I was going to, why don't we put it on the agenda for next month? Uh, um, Ms. Weston, we'll double check with Mr. Carter and we'll see.
Yep.
Hopefully someone will see this meeting on a, on Area 58 and volunteer.
Please.
So next is our, our town administrator update. Mr. LaFond?
Mr. Chairman, a few, few things this evening. Number one, uh, the standing item, our CARES Act update. Um, but I'd also like to comment, uh, prior to that on kind of on something Bob alluded to. And that is as of today, the state of emergency for the state of the Commonwealth has been lifted. I think some of you are probably aware of that. This town never actually declared a state of emergency itself, but I think it was rather unnecessary. However, what it does mean, as Bob alluded to again, is that, uh, that means that the provisions for, um, remote meetings revert back to what they were prior to the special leg- legislation allowing for Zoom and other remote types of meetings. Uh, there is some effort, as I understand, to perhaps, uh, for a separate legislative act to extend that to some extent. But as of today, remote meetings are, um, generally be conducted by, in a fashion prior to the legislative act, which means you have to have a quorum in the room to be able to have a full meeting, by somebody calling in or coming in remotely. So we're back to business as normal, which, uh, again, in some ways it could be problematic. But I think in Carver, most of, I don't think there's any board being remotely anyway. So it shouldn't impact us that much. But moving towards a update on our- moving towards a update on our CARES Act funding. To date, we've submitted nine requests totaling about $1.3 million. The town's allotment through the year is $1.7 million, and the county's requiring that all requests, submissions be in by the end of October. Although, the program runs through the end of December, the goal for them is obviously to complete the review process by the end of December. So we have until October to make our final submissions. I am reviewing the disallowed cost to date, and as of right now, we still have approximately $744,000 of submissions under review. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I put a hard candy in my mouth just before this. I apologize. Right now, we are currently preparing a submission for approximately $400,000, and that would bring us to our overall allotment of 1.7. Those particular, I don't have it listed here, but those two projects that we're looking at, one would be approximately $200,000 for some school remote equipment again, and approximately $150,000 to replace the HVAC system in this building, and some other ancillary-type costs from various departments. As of right now, we continue to work pretty closely with Tom O'Brien. We're in contact, in fact, I was in contact with him today via email. So he's, he's extremely responsive to all of us. And as I've mentioned, I don't know how he does it. This is, this is a significant burden on him. But the other thing we're looking at now is the so-called ARPA funds, also known as the ACT funds, which are Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, CLRFR. So you can add ARPA to CLRFR, and easy, easy to track that way. We are still waiting for full guidance on what to do with our, what the so-called ARPA funds. Mass Municipal Association has provided us some guidance. I was just speaking to our auditor on the way out as she was leaving, talking about some of the, the requirements that they're gonna have, that they're gonna be looking at when we have a new financial officer here. There are five core areas of the, of funding: public, public health spending, economic impacts of the crisis, lost public sector revenue, premium pay for essential workers, and water-sour broadband infrastructure. The town's allotment is approximately $1.2 million of these funds. So we are holding weekly meetings, as I think I've reported previously, of a working group to review our status with CARES Act, current funding considerations and proposals that we want to have. And we're obviously gonna add this to our weekly discussions about how do we deal with these funds. I mean, it's a great opportunity, but as always, looking at, perhaps picking and choosing priorities could, could become difficult, but we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. Any questions before I move on yet?
I guess, well, I guess the only question I have is with, with Ms. Lemay leaving the town, do we have someone down in the finance department that is sort of heading up the CARES Act, or?
Well, yes. The treasurer's, the financial, the finance office is still tracking our expenditures. Effectively, right now, we don't have a huge, there's not a lot to do right now, because we're waiting for review of our submissions. There are some ancillary, sometimes there's requested follow-up spreadsheets from the county if they feel it's necessary. At this point, the, the effort's gonna be after funds are received and having it booked appropriately, and to make sure that it's being used in accordance with how it was, what the money was appropriated for. So they're doing their job down there at the moment, but the burden is a little bit lighter than it was, because we are approaching our overall submission cap. That being said, obviously, having experience with CARES Act would be very helpful. The, I'm trying to think where we're, moving on to Plymouth, Plymouth Street. Again, any questions on our CARES Act?
Anything from the board?
Plymouth Street, as you know, the process is underway. The project began on time. It's anticipated that it will take about six weeks. The project has to be done by November 30th, as we all know. We're painfully aware of some of these things. As of right now, Kevin Fogg has been in touch with DEP, and we are looking to hold a community meeting sometime. We're shooting for June 30th at seven o'clock. Location to be determined, but it may be something we can feel we can hold in this room. And that would be an opportunity for DEP, as well as Kevin, and me and others, to give an update on the, the progress so far, and to answer some questions, like, for instance, the whole question of, you know, what are we gonna do to tie these individual properties in? What's DEP's opinion on doing so? What's DEP's opinion on the need to have to deal with the existing wells in these homes? That's not a given, but we've always, it's been our concern and expectation that the private wells would have to be closed out. Again, we're working on DEP, because obviously, a lot of people would prefer to have, you know, be able to retain those to some capacity for at least outside use. And this, I know we're gonna have some resistance. Even though the town is going to be paying for hookups, most of the, actually, there isn't, there aren't any of the homes up there that have, where the chemical compounds exceed drinking water standards. So there's obviously gonna be some people who are, might be a little hesitant to, to decide they want to be on a town water system. But as they say, DEP may have something to say about that. There is, it's not here, but we're probably gonna have, looking at a small change order of about $46,000. And the reason for that is because one of the homes is so remote from the road, that the town would need to be spending that money to hook up one individual home versus running the line about 300 feet further down Plymouth Street, having an easier tie-in, and at least we have 300 more yard, 300 more feet or so of, of water main in the road. So that's something that, that Kevin has recommended, and the contractor's prepared to do. I think that's about it at the moment on Plymouth Street. As I said, the important, one of the more important things right now is looking at a community meeting. Kevin Fogg has been in touch with most of the owners, property owners. The contractor themselves have, have talked to many of the homeowners themselves, actually knocked on doors to let them know what's, you know, what to expect. But it'll be good to have a coordinated meeting. I think that the time is right. I'm trying to coordinate it with DEP, and when they think the time is right, too. Moving on, our Finance Director applications, it has closed, and we obviously are reviewing those. We have approximately 15 applicants. Chairman of the Finance Committee, the Chair of the Capital Outlay Committee are charged with, well, the Town Administrator appoints that position in consultation with those two officials. So we are all involved in this process at this time. And as I'll just say right now, down below, we do have a Capital Outlay Committee Chair, I think on a motion by Mr. Hoffman, if I recall. Beth Sullgar, it was elected Chair, and Marie Zwegman, Vice Chair. So that's a, that committee and process is, is up and running. No heavy lifting in the short term, but a lot of heavy lifting, Jim, later on. So, three nights a week. I understand it's three nights a week. So, so we will be getting that process of weeding out candidates a little bit more thoroughly over this coming, coming week. Cranberry Village Wells, that's an interesting proposition, I think. As you may recall, I've given you some very minor updates, but over the past year or so, we've, we've had some conversations with the, the leadership of Cranberry Village about, you know, started really with a conversation about concerns over water bills and the cost of running the system, and how that's impacting the village and their residents financially. And I think we had some good conversations about what those factors were, what some of the challenges were. And after some period of time, we came to, we kind of came to the joint conclusion that looking at perhaps conveying the wells and the infrastructure down there would very well perhaps be in the best interest of the town, as well as the village. I did request that we get some, some formal requests from the, from the leadership of the village stating their interest in a possible conveyance. And I think I may have put that in your folder for your review. And so I will be discussing this with Town Council, again, to find out exactly what the process is, how that should lay out. Obviously, everything would be dependent upon the approval of this, of this board, and I assume it will also take a vote at town meeting to transfer any type of property. So that's something, a process that we'll be, start looking at in the next week or so. That sound about right? Okay. I already hit the Capital Outlay Committee, and just some quick reminders, the Redevelopment Authority is holding its two tours of the Route 44 site this coming Saturday, as well as the following Saturday. And I know that I believe Elaine has posted meetings of this board for both of those dates, in the event that there's a quorum. For site inspections don't necessarily require a posting, but to the extent that there could be some conversation, even some deliberation, I think it's a, it's a safe, safe approach to do that. And to that extent, that they are public meetings, the public has a right to be there, too. So, so those dates are June 19th into 26th at 10 o'clock.
Mr. Belvin.
Just, just one thing. So I think what you have to understand is that site visits, even though they're posted that a quorum will be there, the public isn't really, unless the property owner allows the public to come to the site visit and attend, they weren't. What it says is, under the open meeting law, is that a site visit, you can't discuss, you can't deliberate. Okay? So, in all actuality, unless that property owner says, yes, people can come to this, all right, it's on us as elected officials to make sure that we don't discuss, and we don't deliberate things. We can ask them questions about the property, okay? But we can't come to a joint decision on, well, is that okay or not?
True, yeah.
So I just want people to understand, there is a clear, when things happen to you that you don't like, and violations happen to you, you want to make sure the public understands, I won't let it happen. Okay? If I go to a site visit, I'm not gonna discuss or deliberate on that property. Okay? No one should. Okay? That's what public hearings and public meetings are for. So I just want to make sure everyone understands that we go there, let, let the developer tell us about the project, and if we have a specific question about it, that's fine. But we don't talk about anything else about that property, property or project, property or project. Thank you.
And in that vein, I will, from Sharon Clark, who's the Chair of the Redevelopment Authority, she also wants to remind people that if there's a quorum, it needs to be posted. And I think, even if that's the case, Bob, I would agree, there should be little or no deliberation. So it starts at nine o'clock off Montello Street, and again, boards, committees, commissions, departments, everybody's invited, so it's not just this board, not just the RDA. So I think you'll find that interesting. I know I, I've only been up there once myself, so I think I'm looking forward to it, because the developer, representative from the developer will be there, too. And 10 o'clock, the 19th, Council on Aging Open House, I expect everybody to be there, before you go on your site walk.
And that lasts till?
That lasts until, um-
Ten to two o'clock.
And the one I thought-
I have yellow one. 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM is light refreshments. Lobster tails. It's on Connie. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Minutes, license topics not reasonably anticipated by the Chair, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Our next meeting, next meetings will be on July 20th and August 17th. And obviously, there's a bit of a, a time between tonight and August and July 20th. So if we need an additional meeting, we may have to schedule one in there. So minutes, minutes, we have minutes of May 18th.
Chairman, Capital Light Outlay Committee update, did we miss that? And the Finance Director recruitment update, did I miss that?
You missed it. I hit them both, yes.
All right, I'm sorry.
Squad, all right.
I'll watch the video.
Thoughts on the minutes of May 18th? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve May 18th's minutes.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Just one, one thing is, just as a, for future, in my opinion, is, when there is a, a vote that's 4-1 or 3-2, if the actual members' names can be put out there of who voted and how they voted, like I said, it's just, five O's, yeah, we all voted, no problem. But when you start to be a contested vote, I think our name should be there to say, this is how we voted. And the public, if they look at this document, they'll know, okay, well, they voted this way. All right? Just my opinion.
I don't disagree with that. Does anyone have any thoughts on that? Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second on May 18th. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. May 25th.
I'll make a motion, we approve May 25th meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Again, just the same thing for future.
All in favor of approving the minutes of May 25th?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. June 1st.
I'll make a motion, we approve the meeting minutes, the meeting minutes for June 1st.
Second?
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on June 1st? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's see, we have the request for road race, South Shore Race Management, July 31st at 8:00 AM.
This is the one for Old Home Day, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, we approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then we have, we have a request for 18 one-day special licenses for Renaissance Foods Limited, September 4th, 5th, 6th, 11th, 12th, 18th, 19th, 25th, 26th, and October 2nd, 3rd, 9th, 10th, 11th, 16th, 17th, 23rd, and 24th. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Just, they, they pay the fee for each day, correct? Whatever, I don't know what the fee is for this one. But I just want to make sure that everyone knows that they do pay a fee for each day.
I just want, I'm just happy that King Richard's Fair's opening, and that Old Home Day is happening, so.
Yeah.
I think we all are. Yeah, it's good, good to be back.
That's right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And finally, we have a request to put gold ribbons on the lamp posts in front of the library and on Metta Brook Way from 8:28 to 9:30. And this is from the, from the Gold Gold folks. And I believe we did this last couple of years, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Gold Gold putting up the ribbons.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Select Board Community Announcements. Mr. Hoffman.
Just want to remind everybody, the Athletic Boosters is having their annual golf fundraiser this Saturday. People still want to donate raffle prizes, they will be accepted. And it goes towards funding the Athletic Booster scholarships that we get on every year. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hewens?
Thank you. I have two. I also wanted to echo Mr. Hoffman's sentiment that Old Home Day is indeed on, the last Saturday in July, which this year's 31st, and it kicks off with the road race. And the clam bake, I think, takes place around 1:00. And they usually sell out, so get your tickets. My second announcement is that the Community One Stop for Growth Grant application is in the pipeline, so to speak. We submitted it on June 30th. And I would like to thank the following employees of the town. John Woods, the DPW Superintendent and Assistant Director of Operations and Maintenance, Kevin Fogg, our Health Agent, Dave Sedentoff, Director of Operations and Maintenance, Sean Martin from Fuston O'Neill, he's not really an employee, he's our, part of the engineering team that works for the town. And also, I'd like to thank Mr. LaFond for his help on doing that. It was, it was quite a process, and it's done. We'll see. No guarantees, folks, but if you don't try, you don't get it.
Thanks for doing that.
Thank you.
Ms. Bocart?
Yay, exciting yard sale update. Okay, so we are over 40 homes, which is awesome. Okay, so we are over forty homes, which is awesome. Um, so the feedback that I've gotten both online, because Facebook is basically the way I'm getting the word out, and in person, and the emails I'm getting, has been overwhelmingly positive. People are reaching out, even if they're not signing up, they're saying it's a great idea. I think almost every email I've gotten with people signing up thanking us for doing this. So I want to spread that and pass it on to you guys, that people are really happy that, that we decided to do this, so that's awesome. Again, don't know if you saw it on Facebook, but we made the radio. I got a random call last week when I was at the playground with my girls, and Fun one oh seven point one called and was like, I heard about your yard sale. Can you tell me more about it? And I was like, how did you hear about our little yard sale? So we had a great conversation. There's a great write-up about it on their, um, their app, it's not on their, their website, but basically it's talked up. At one point, it says like, if this goes well in Carver, this could really birth a whole gener, a whole set of ideas on the South Shore and the South Coast. So eyes are on us, which I think is pretty cool. The deadline to sign up is Thursday at four PM. So we're over forty, I'd love to get to over fifty, sky's the limit, but it's really exciting. The, there's definitely a good spirit about it, so I'm glad that we are doing this.
Mr. Belvin.
Well, I'm gonna sidetrack on that right there. So I wanna thank you for putting this out here to us. I also wanna thank you and your daughter for your videos that you posted. If no one's seen these videos, I'm sorry, you guys are the actors and actresses, actresses of our community right now. Okay? So I wanna thank you very much, because you've done a very good job at it.
Thank you.
So I appreciate that. I also wanna say thank you to everyone during this COVID time, our employees. I know it's tough and stressful, but we kinda made it through it. We're kinda hoping that we don't have anything else, um, happen within the next five to seven more days, um, but looks good right now. So keep getting vaccinated, please. It's not as bad as you think. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. And I have nothing to add, I'll just say that I look forward to seeing everybody at the Council on Aging Open House on Saturday, and then around town at the yard sales on the twenty-sixth. So, Mr. Belvin.
Sorry, I, I, I'm sorry. The, uh, on Sunday, Farmers Market, come, please, I'm sorry, I didn't, I wanted to put that out there, but come to the Farmers Market. I missed it Sunday, but I will be there next Sunday.
Absolutely. All right. At this point, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, subsection twenty-one-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining negotiations with unions, operation and maintenance, that may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the town if held in open session, and to reconvene in open session.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Mr. Belvin.
I just wanna make it clear that we're gonna come back in open session and to complete our regular business.
We are absolutely going to come back in open session.
Thank you.
So we have a motion, I'm sorry, did we have a second?
Yes.
Motion and a second. Mr. Hoffman, any discussion? Mr. Hoffman.
I'll say aye.
Ms. Yuenz?
Sarah Yuenz says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Robert Belvin says aye.
Jim Bogart says aye.
We are in executive session.